Welcome to the September 17th Hadley Public School School Committee meeting. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
No move.
I can do it.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Great, here we are. We've started the school year. Yay!
Wow.
Alright.
Looks like we made it.
Looks like we made it, that's right. It sounds like a song, Humaera.
Indeed it is.
Alright. Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? None?
No.
Okay. See Annie going no. Alright, let's open it up then for public comment. Again, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your digital hand. I can call on you. You can come off mute. We will adhere to the public comment policy we have been adhering to regarding topics, process, and timing. And if you are unable to raise a digital hand, just come off of mute and indicate your desire to speak in public comment, please. I'll give it a few moments for folks to make that indication. I'm not seeing anything yet. Okay. Seeing none, I am going to move forward with presentations and discussion items. Fall athletics. Mr. Sutnik.
Thank you very much. Dr. McKenzie, I'm able to share my screen, correct? You allowed me to do that?
I'm gonna make that happen right now. Here I am, making that happen.
Not a problem. So in a second, I will share the updates that we had for the fall athletics program. We've had a few changes that we've made since I last met and chatted with you about it. And I'd just like to quickly update the school committee on the latest and greatest ones going on with fall athletics and decisions that we've not only made as a district, but as a group of athletic directors in the Franklin County group who we are matched up with for this fall, so.
You are co-host now, Eric, but I do not see your screen yet.
Oh yeah, I haven't put it up yet, sorry. I was waiting for the signal. Alright, can everyone see my screen now?
There we go, yes.
Alright, excellent. So there's just six points that I'll go through as far as updates and major changes to the fall athletic events going on. I'm actually gonna just touch on six because I don't have anything further from it down below in my paragraphs or my notes. So, and that is just the, the removal of the field hockey call-up is an option for Hopkins Athletic students at at this time because Smith Academy is not going to be hosting athletics this fall. So that was completely removed from the fall athletic plan. So the five remaining things that I will touch on, fall one versus fall two for soccer, number two opponents for interscholastic competition. Point number three, transportation, both school and parent-based. Number four, spectators at home events, actually away events. And number five, contact tracing at events. So as far as point number one, fall one versus fall two for soccer season. Originally, we were looking at hosting soccer as a fall one sport along with cross-country and golf. When we decided to regionalize our opponents and play only the Franklin County teams in our athletics this fall, we ran into an issue in the fact that no other schools in Franklin County were going to be hosting their fall, their soccer programs this fall. So we had to make the decision to move that to a fall two, to the fall two season, and instead offer clinics or, and our trainings at the school provided by the coaching staff for this fall. So we're limiting the number of events. They're gonna do two trainings a week, both for the boys and the girls program, seven to 12, and it'll go from tomorrow all the way up until October 30th. So the competitive interscholastic athletic season, we played in the fall two season in that February 22nd, I believe, off the top of my head, to the April 25th timeline. And we'll see what our opponent schedule would look like as far as that's concerned, depending on a number of things that would happen between now and then. So. Moving along, another update. Let's move this, my scroll bar here, alright. The scheduled opponents and travel, that's simply been updated to reflect that indeed we will only be playing the Franklin County Athletic teams this fall. Smith Volk would have been included, I'm sorry, Smith Academy would have been included in that group, but they're not hosting athletics this fall. So these are the teams we will be playing in golf and cross-country as far as interscholastic athletic events. I had spoke about the fact that we were leaning that way at the last school committee meeting I presented at, but now it is finalized and we've established schedules. So as far as away games and transportation, we're still looking to provide transportation to the all, all the athletic events at the interscholastic events. We did update the athletic plan just to notify parents and students that went on the bus, that the students would be three feet apart instead of the typical six feet and just, you know, with, as you get in a closed space with the proximity, there is a likelihood of increased transmission, so just as a note. But on the same note, we also decided to create a form for students to be transported by themselves or their parents if they chose to go that route in anticipation of using school transportation. We posted it on the district website under the athletics webpage, and you can find it on this link here to provide families an option if that's the way they chose to transport to events for this fall. Moving on. So we were, we've been doing a lot of discussion in the Franklin County Athletic Directors Group regarding how we would handle spectators this fall. And we came to the decision that at, at all home events, we weren't going to allow spectators for any home events, regardless of the event. Wasn't an easy decision, but based off of a myriad of factors, we decided to go in that direction. We, as the Franklin County Athletic Director Group, did craft a letter, as you can find on this link here, stating those expectations. It will not affect, that decision will not affect us as much because we're not hosting the soccer competitions this fall, but it would affect spectators regarding golf and cross-country. So the expectation will be just staff members who are going to help run the event, any officials if necessary, and both the home and away team. So to try and minimize the amount of people at an event and stay in, just make sure we're following the state guidelines, limiting 50 people to one site for an event. So was really the driving force behind the decision to not do, not have spectators at events for this fall. So moving along, with the fact that we were not going to have spectators at our home events for this fall, we just modified the contact tracing. It was essentially shortened and just modified to show that we'll be tracking the athletes, the coaching staff, game officials, and game personnel attending. We removed a section regarding tracking spectators and things of that nature. With the decision to not allow spectators to attend events, I am looking to work with Hadley Media for not only this fall, but any time that we would look to make a a decision regarding no spectators at games, to film the games and at the very least have them posted on the Hadley Media site. We do that for the, the home basketball games, for all the varsity home basketball games. People seem to really enjoy it, and I know it would be disappointing the fact that people were not able to witness in person the games, but at least they could be able to view them if we were able to tape them and get them posted online. So that is the series of updates as it stands. At this point, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them to the best of my ability.
Thanks, Eric, for the update. And yeah, I know that this is obviously, you know, changes as it's impacted by other districts and their involvement and, you know, who is part of that competition. So much appreciated the latest on where we are with the fall sports.
You're welcome.
So Eric, this is the fault. Thanks for the clarity there. So if someone says soccer doesn't practice this fall, does that affect anything of how they play in the spring? Are they, I guess the question is, are they obligated to practice this fall?
No, these are completely optional to being provided by the school to enhance the fall experience, right, to get athletes back and moving. This is not considered their competitive season. So there's no obligation to go to every single training, any or all trainings, and it would not affect their standing as far as a member of the soccer team in the spring. One of the things that our coaches are expected to, one of the guidelines our coaches are expected to follow regardless of any season is out of school or out of season, participation of any kind should not impact in-season participation or the student standing on the team. Coaches are supposed to treat student athletes the same regardless of what they did in the offseason. It's who shows up on the first day of the season and how they fit in in their role on the team for that specific season. So, but great question.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee? And hi Tara, I saw you joined us. Alright. Thank you, Eric. Looking forward to hearing more from you over the fall.
Alright, thank you very much for your time today. Everyone have a great evening.
Thanks, you too. Okay, we're gonna move to Hadley Kids Plan and Rates.
Yes, so I will share, the plan is something the school committee had reviewed previously at a previous meeting. I really am going to focus on the rates and remind people of when they can expect Hadley Kids or after-school to be open. Let me share the screen. So assuming, and this is after the school committee, assuming that the we progress through the phases as we anticipate. We have in-person learning available to all students. The first day in-person learning is available to all students is the first day of Hadley Kids. So that could be, the earliest that would be is October 26th, I believe is the Monday. And given the fact that we have shortened days, again, Hadley Kids and these documents, I will add a link to this folder. It was added in, I think, the last newsletter and I will add it again in this letter. So people, all these documents are public. They're in the superintendent messages folder in my drive, which means anybody can access them. So they're public documents. Hadley Kids has done a wonderful job of setting up a plan, of walking through how many students would be in a cohort, making sure that we adhere to the things that are really critical, mask-wearing, physical distancing, keeping students in small groups and trying to match cohorts as much as possible. The big difference is that students will start at 1:00 and parents will have the option of picking up children at, the, the last year it was two and a half hours from 3:00 to 5:30. So students could do a pickup at 3:30 or they could do a pickup at 5:30. And if students, if parents opt to do a pickup at 5:30, the rate is $25 per day, and if they do the pickup at 3:30, it's $14 per day. $14 per day has been the rate at Hadley Kids for a long, long, long time. So that hasn't changed. This just takes into consideration additional operating expenses that we will incur by extending the program by two hours if parents choose to extend the program by two hours. Parents can, as you can see by the enrollment, which is on the screen, parents can determine which days they need the program. And we also will allow families to say what time they need to leave, so they don't need to pick the same time every single day. So we can, we just need to have a sense, somewhat of a sense, perhaps to the best of their ability, about every month is when we kind of do adjustments to schedules, I think is what Sarah Frost is looking for. So I wanted, in this case, a change because rates, fees, or something that the school committee has to approve and vote on. So what needs to be approved here is not the plan per se, it's in line with the district reopening plan, but it's that there's a new fee or a new rate for parents who require care from 1:00 until 5:30. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about the plan or the, the updated rate here, taking into account the additional time?
I just have a quick question, and that is, the shorter amount of time, the $14 per day per child, is that about equivalent to what it was pre-pandemic?
Oh, it hasn't changed since, in years. I think it's been $14 a day since I've worked here. So it's, honestly, I don't think, yeah, even when it was private, it would have been run by the nonprofit. That rate has not changed. So all we've done is add roughly, you know, more or less kind of a per-hour rate to the backend.
Great, thank you.
And to be clear, Annie, you said that this won't start until, at the earliest, October 23rd?
It's, the 23rd of Friday, I'm sorry, it's the Monday that students would come back. So the first day, the easiest way to say it is Hadley Kids becomes available when 100% of students have the option of attending school if they choose. That's the date. Hadley Kids does not start before that.
Yeah, October 26th is what's cited at the top of this plan, no earlier than.
Well, that could be that. Hopefully I read the calendar correctly. It's the Monday after the six-week period.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Do we, do we know, do we have enough interest in people staffing it this year?
We are not concerned about that right now. We, we have had interest in it, so we're not concerned that we, we won't have enough staffing. As a matter of fact, we have had folks reach out to us, and we're very grateful that a lot of our Hopkins students are often eager to staff Hadley Kids as well.
Okay. So this is, this is an action item for us to approve the Hadley Kids rates for fiscal year '21. If there are no further questions, is there a motion to approve these rates?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Post? Abstain?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the Hadley Elementary School Handbook. Ms. Dowd?
Hi.
Hello again.
Nice to see everybody. Yeah, so welcome, and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Am I allowed to do that, Annie?
Yes, I think you're a co-host. You should be able to.
Okay.
You should be able to. Let me have it, doesn't work. So be so glad when this is, when I'm not, when it's different again.
I want to make sure I have it. Okay. So what I'd like to share with you all is just the summary page. You guys received this about two days ago. I'm sure you're all very, very busy as we all are at the start of school, trying to manage everything. So we do have our summary page, and right here is just what we've changed and why. Our changes are pretty minimal this year. I know April Camuso had a lot of work to do with her handbook. Ours has been tweaked the past two years that I've been working here, going on to my third year. So the handbook looked pretty good. There were a couple of things that we needed to adjust around spelling and grammar, just some capitalization, very minimal. The updated school year, obviously, the 2020-2021 school year. There was some language that had been updated that April Camuso had covered in her presentation that also goes along with ours as far as the health and nurse information, and these were COVID-19-related updates that needed to be added to the language, especially around medication, time of kids being out, going from 12 hours to 24 hours. And those were very minimal tweaks, and you can see those on pages 16 through 18. The changes that I really had to look at for myself were the time of arrival. I'm sure if you noticed, some people have been able to drop off their in-person students. We had to adjust things to make that a little bit more seamless and to allow for social distancing and making sure that we weren't mixing cohorts. So traditionally, what we had done was we, I had, had a staff member who opened up the cafe and invited children who were dropped off a little bit earlier at 8:15 because we were still working on that before-care program. So we did have someone who was in the cafe who would allow our drop-off students to come in at 8:15. We are no longer doing that this year because of all the reasons that are related around making sure that we're not mixing cohorts and that we're also not asking staff to watch students prior to school. So we've changed our arrival time from 8:15 to 8:20. And then we've allowed children to come into each individual hallway that they've been assigned, so that we're making sure that we're spreading children out and making sure that they get into the, to the school as safely as possible. Our bus students still arrive at the same time and enter through the front door. So that's why we had to change the time from 8:15 to 8:20 due to our supervision and also due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so that's the only big change as far as time of arrival. Also with dismissal, we asked families, and everybody has been very supportive of this, if there are going to be changes to your child's plan, especially for in-person students, that you contact the office before 11 o'clock. And we just simply asked this so that we are able to coordinate all the pieces that I just spoke about, making sure that if there, if there's a child that needs to be dismissed, we're mindful that we're not asking adults to come into the building, but we then escort that child down to someone who can escort them out of the building safely, making sure that we're maintaining social distancing and that the child gets where they need to be. Now, obviously, there are emergencies and things happen. I'm a parent, I get that. And sometimes we will get that phone call right before the, the child gets on the bus and somebody's begging to hold him back and have him be a parent pickup. We understand that that's gonna happen, but for the most, we ask that at 11, before 11 o'clock, be mindful that we'd like to have any changes to the students' day, be communicated directly with the front office. We also don't want notes to be sent in because we want to make sure that teachers are kind of co-horted and staying with their students. We don't want the added responsibility on the teachers to be walking the hallways and trying to deliver things to the front office. So we ask that families email us. If they're not able to email us, they can call us, of course. So that's the only addition for notes and changes in dismissal. We also had updates. April Camuso touched upon the training that Dr. McKenzie, myself, and April went through for our Title IX, and so we added the language that's current and updated from our, from our, the district training that we attended, and so that can be found in the document as well. Our attendance policy has also the addition of, the attendance policies will apply to both in-person and remote learners for the school year. So we wanted to recognize that there are a percentage of students that are now remote, and so our attendance policies have just been updated to reflect both that there are both remote learners and in-person as well. Those are all the current updates to the handbook. I am able to take any questions that you might have?
No questions from me. If folks have questions?
No questions, seems pretty straightforward.
Great. Okay, and this is an action item in terms of approval of the handbook for Hadley Elementary School. If there are no questions or clarifications needed, is there a motion for that approval?
It's still moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay. It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, going back to rates, we're gonna switch back to the pre-kindergarten rates. Annie?
Yeah, so I'm also going to allow Ms. Winter to, I can do some explanation of the rates, but I'm gonna allow Ms. Winter to take us through some of, or Ms. Dowd, to take us through some of the changes to the Hadley, the preschool kind of handbook and things that you had updated, Ms. Winter or Ms. Dowd, and part of that, the rates are in there. So if at any point I need to provide clarification on the rates, I'm happy. I'll jump in and do that. Who wants to do that?
I can, Ms. Dowd, if you don't mind just sharing the screen for me, I'm not.
Not at all. And I would have to say that I really appreciate Ms. Winter's participation in trying to update the handbook, given that today was the first day of preschool.
Yes, good job.
She had a lot on her plate, and I just appreciate her doing a lot, and it was wonderful to see the littlest students come in today, so. Let me get that up for you.
Thank you.
Preschool. Here we go. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
So much the same as Ms. Dowd had said for the elementary handbook, some of our things were just changed to make more sense for this year due to things being different from COVID. One of the first things, our payments are generally due on the 15th of each month. Obviously, we wouldn't ask for our families to pay when their children just arrived today. So we've tried to bump that date out, and we had thought that the 30th might give enough time for people to be able to do that. We've also updated some of the language to include both in-person and remote learners. For our time, we have children participating in both programs right now. We've also added some things that the town hall for years has been asking that I remind families. We thought it would be a good idea to put it into the handbook so that everybody's aware. Checks being written in blue or black ink, it seems like a really simple thing, but when someone writes it in red ink or purple, it won't be read by the machine. So we're trying to give parents a very nice place to have all of that important information. So we have updated that as well. So that will all be on the first page here. Do you mind just scrolling down, Jen? Sorry. Thank you. We've included the updated rates in here as well. Normally, a preschool schedule, families have a choice of anywhere from two to five days per week. We usually have a half-day, which is an 11:15 pickup, a lunch bunch group, which is a 12:15 pickup, and a full-day option, which runs until 2:45, 3:00. There's a window for families. Obviously, this year, in aligning with the reopening plan, we won't be going until 2:45 or 3:00. We'll be going until 1:00. So we have added in what we called the long-extended morning, which will run until 1:00 PM. So we've adjusted rates to meet that need for families, so they're not having to pay for the entire day if their child is not with us for the entire day. And I don't know if you would like to speak about those rates, Dr. McKenzie, or?
I would just say, I imagine the school committee might ask if there was any increase to the rates. There were no increases to the rates. It's just people pay, would pay more, so that the morning rate and the full-day rate are the same as they were in fiscal year. What fiscal year are we in right now? We're in '21. They're the same as they were in fiscal year '20, last year. But we just added these two additional tiers, and the changes, how much one pays also depends not only on how long you stay, but how many days per week they access the program.
Thank you. So we can scroll down to the next. In looking over the handbook, I've noticed that there was no language around our programs that we have, such as half-day, and now what we're calling the short-extended morning, which is our 12:15 typically called lunch bunch, but this year, obviously, it's a little bit different. So I've added language to let families know what their child, what they can expect their child to be doing during those times, what their program will include. There's language around the full-day program, but we've added it for the half-day program, the short-extended morning, and the long-extended morning. So families will know what is happening for their child during those times. We can scroll down. And one thing that was changed in the full-day program, this has been happening for years, but now there's just changing some language. Instead of mats being sanitized weekly, they are actually sanitized daily after each child uses them, so I wanted to make sure to update that. And then the other things that were changed, our student drop-off procedure and our student pickup procedure. During a normal year, we would have families bring their child into the building. This year, to limit exposure, we are having families bring their children to the parking lot and a staff member is going out and escorting the children into the door. The same is true for the afternoon pickup, where we will bring the children out for their families. We've also changed our health policy and the visitor policy to align with what the elementary school has, so that would be the same. That way, there's consistency for everybody. That's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. I know when I read this, I Thank you. I know when I read this, I was just struck by, I appreciate the flexibility that's been implemented here in terms of the different pricing structure to really give, you know, options for families that may, it may or may not, you know, have different timeframes in mind. So that's appreciated to be able to kind of clearly see what each of those have in terms of a tuition dollar impact.
I just clarify for families, in case they're wondering, that those, the tuition, if a family opts to be remote, preschoolers have the option of being in-person, if they opt to be remote, then, and participate in the program, they still would pay tuition. So the tuition is not, if you participate in the program, there are expenses associated with having a program. And because in-person is an option, parents would, that rate, there is no different rate for somebody who says that they're going to be remote.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you. And I agree with you, Heather. It's nice to have that flexibility, the different options.
Great.
Ms. Winter, thank you very much for doing this this evening. And thanks to your children for putting up with it also. I appreciate it.
That's right. This does require approval for the pre-K rates for fiscal year twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Seconded.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstained? All right. It is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have COVID nineteen mobile testing response units. Every time I see this, I think of the Saturday Night Live one-man mobile uplink, but I know that's not what it is.
So, so these are also documents that, there's a link in the slideshow. Again, I will send out all of these documents a second time in the newsletter. They are all public. So this is just a little overview of what these mobile testing response units are. The process for one coming to the school, under what conditions would they come? And what's important is that people understand what that might look like. So first is, let me try to work this. So how does it work? The district is the first thing that's going to happen, and this will really happen in the nurse's office. So if we find out that a staff member or a student has tested positive for COVID nineteen, it doesn't matter. Some people have asked, well, does it only matter if you find that out in school, if it happens in school? First of all, I remind folks, there's no way, no one knows where, if they test positive for COVID, there's no way to know. Did that happen at the grocery store? Did it happen? Where did it happen? So as soon as we know that a case is positive, staff or student, then we, the school nurse calls. This is in addition to contacts that the school nurse may make with Department of Public Health or Board of Public Health. The school nurse calls the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Rapid Response Center. This is a dedicated phone line just to get information on positive COVID cases. This, the intake specialist at DESI, logs this information into a tracking system, not first name, not last name, simply logs staff, student, and the district and school is what they care about. Then the department is going to monitor this tracking system several times a day and will contact the school, in this case, the school nurse, within twenty-four hours and provide information on next steps. So when might a mobile testing unit arrive? In a classroom, if within a fourteen-day period, two or more individuals in a classroom test positive and classroom transmission is suspected, a mobile testing unit may be deployed to test all individuals in the class, including the adults associated with that class. That, who, the question, a logical question is, who decides if classroom transmission is suspected? The nurses communicate with Department of Public Health, Board of Health, and with the dedicated resources at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I don't decide that. If in a grade, within fourteen days, three or more individuals in a grade test positive and transmission is likely, and transmission likely occurred in the school, the mobile testing unit may be deployed to test all individuals in the grade, children and adults associated with that grade. And in a school, if within a fourteen-day period, three percent of the school tests positive and transmission likely occurred in the school, the mobile testing unit may be deployed to test all individuals in the school. And what does that, oh, and on a bus? Same thing, fourteen-day period, two or more students on the same bus, that's positive and transmission likely occurred on the bus. The MTU may be deployed to test all the individuals on that bus. So how do we prepare for this? We should let the community know what we're doing now. And I will, again, continually provide information in the newsletter that this is how it works, this is when it's deployed. And this is what it looks like. So the nurse, if in fact, in that communication with DESI, remember I said every single case that's positive, we call the department, the department's calling us back, the department also works with DPH and says, yeah, we think that that transmission may be occurring in your classroom grade, school, or on your bus. So we're going to deploy a mobile testing unit. Nurse contacts Department of Public Health. Conversation, Department of Public Health ultimately decides. So it isn't just the school nurse gets to call and request. Collaboration, DPH ultimately decides if the mobile testing unit will be deployed. We notify the school community that a mobile testing unit is going to arrive at the school. And the nurse notifies the eligible individuals who will be tested when the mobile testing unit arrives. You see a picture of an ambulance, because that's what it will look like. So people should be prepared for the fact that when the mobile testing unit comes, it'll look like there's first responders and ambulance in front of the school, around the school to, to do the mobile testing. And this is a link that, again, as I will send out again for people, they can access all of the information, the multi-page documents that explain under what conditions, what it looks like, and the criteria for having a mobile testing unit arrive. So this is not an action item, but it was just part of the preparation, is letting the community know what it is, when it's deployed, and what it looks like when it arrives. And that's it with that, I think.
Thanks, Annie. Any questions from folks?
I'm slightly concerned about the visual indicator of people seeing an ambulance outside the school. But I, the, on one hand, it could be a visual indicator that, you know, we're taking proactive steps and it's probably just a COVID test to be cautious. And then on the other hand, I wonder whether it's prudent to sort of respect privacy and have it parked in the back. And I don't have an answer for that, but that's what comes to mind when I see an ambulance, is that it's a small town and people are going to, word will spread super fast, so.
Well, and often there is messaging, kind of, sometimes to the public when there is, you know, an incident or some event at the school. Would there, would there be any kind of
Yes.
Messaging without any specifics necessarily?
Yes. So even for positive cases in, and I certainly, when I say this, do not expect anyone to remember this or to remember where it is, because I wrote the plan and I don't remember where it is. But I can assure you that even within the plan, there's a whole, the whole section on protocols, which you can find in the table of contents. Within that section, you can link to the notifications, what it looks like, actually, what I will be sending home to parents, even just under suspected cases. We would never disclose any identifying information. Because we also recognize that we don't want people to get misinformation and start to get alarmed and afraid. So yes, there would be messaging that went out via our school brain's emailing system. And typically, yeah, typically, I, that is, that would be an email. I usually reserve phone calls for school is closed. So, or you have to come get your child. But yes, there would be messages and some of those notice, notifications already sitting in the plan. People can see the template for what they can expect to receive.
Any other questions or comments? I hope we don't need it, but I'm glad we are prepared.
I have a question. Will, is the select board going to be notified in case, in your plan, Annie?
So I generally notify, if you're saying if a, if a mobile testing unit were deployed or, yes. So anytime I send out messages like this, any, anything unusual, so if we see if it's not a fire drill, but if there's public safety, anything unusual, I try anytime I send those out to CC, the select board. So I send it over to the town administrator and I then forward it, I forward those parent messages to the entire select board. Because I know that people can call town hall asking what's going on.
Right.
So just like I do with the newsletter, I always try to forward all those messages to the select board and town administrator as well.
Thank you. We think you're doing a great job.
Oh, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane. All right, if there are no other questions, this was just a presentation discussion items, so no action needed. Thank you very much for covering that. Superintendent and district goals is next.
Yes, so here we go. Never screens here. We're just getting really good at this. So I hope that I incorporated feedback from the school committee. I will remind you that the general things, kind of on the first page, are longer term. They're aligned directly with standards and indicators. That's to facilitate your ability to evaluate me, because by law, you have to evaluate me on very specific standards and indicators that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education determines. And then, but on the activities for this year, let's go here. So hopefully, I captured what was critical to you. And if I didn't, just give me feedback and I can bring it back on October first. So under instructional leadership, one of our priorities will be making sure that we are implementing instructional practices that support high-quality and engaging remote learning. I know that's a priority for the school committee and for our community. And the school committee has appreciated, it seems to me, survey data feedback from families, from students. So we're committed to making sure that we are reviewing the impact of our instruction on student achievement and engagement, not only through assessments, but also through surveys and other qualitative feedback measures. We would share those with the school committee. Making sure that we evaluate our policies, practices, curricula, school and district culture for implicit bias, and identify evidence-based interventions to address racism, bias, and explicitly teach anti-racism. Implement our innovation pathways in business and finance and life sciences, and monitor the achievement and engagement of initial student cohorts. This will be year one of implementation. A similar goal for early college, high school. And then if opportunities for funding become available to apply for additional high-quality college and career pathways, to include engineering and technology, the arts, and public safety or health professions. And prepare for our project Lead the Way launch, which will be next school year. We would prepare this year and implement next year. Research, select, and implement a framework that expand, enhance, and evaluate practices to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. I provide an example here, I'm not saying that's what we would use, but to have an actual framework to evaluate these practices and to see the extent to which we are making diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. Foster positive labor relations. Implement our district reopening plan, so I had heard last time, which I appreciate the school committee acknowledging just the plan implementation is a pretty heavy lift. So to implement that with fidelity and monitor the effectiveness of our mitigation strategies and provide regular updates to the school committee and community. Track and report on efforts to diversify our workforce and secure grant funding to expand programs and increase available resources for teaching, learning, and effective operations. Collaborate with our community groups to implement anti-racist practices, curriculum, and policies in the district. Survey our families and students regarding COVID nineteen response in remote and in-person learning, instruction and learning. And recruit teachers to participate in meaningful decision-making teams at the building and district level and provide educators and staff with the resources and materials and professional development and find high-quality instruction in remote, in-person, and hybrid learning environments. So again, I am open for feedback if I am missing things that you could mention that were critical for the school committee that you would like me to focus on this year.
Yeah, I read through these and felt like they really did address the feedback and the acknowledgement of, you know, the situation that we're in now. And I appreciated you, you know, infusing that in there, given the work, you know, and the undertaking that that is in itself.
Well, that feedback was very clear, so I appreciate that. That was, and I did this in collaboration with the leadership team. So they helped to draft it because they'll use that to have conversations with their school councils and as a springboard for also making sure that their school strategy documents align with the district strategy documents.
I think this looks good, Annie. I don't have any edits, any comments.
Yeah, I agree. I think it covers everything that we talked about in terms of the priorities for this coming year.
This is something the school committee does need to approve.
Yep. Action item for approval of district and superintendent goals. Is there a motion for that?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstained? Okay. Great. And Tara, are you, I haven't heard from you yet. I just want to make sure you're able to see and hear and interact with us.
I'm sorry, I'm nodding my head and I'm motioning approval in my eyes, but I didn't have any.
You did ask a question earlier. Now I'm all remembering. Okay, now. My bad. All right, next. In-person enrollment for the first six weeks.
So these numbers we put together, they may have changed slightly, right? So some people are kind of, like, some folks have joined us for in-person. So some, there's a little bit of adjustment, but overall, you can roughly see, we have about a hundred and twenty-three students total in the district, roughly seventy-six at Hadley Elementary and forty-seven at Hopkins Academy. So I am really, really grateful to our faculty and our staff. I just can't emphasize this enough. We are blessed, not only with people who are dedicated, committed, doing, doing really great work in circumstances that are new and different. There are many districts where they haven't even sorted out when, if, how people are returning. So our staff have been working hard, on deck, since day one of professional development, doing a phenomenal job with students, interacting with families, trying really hard to have all kinds of orientations and ways to engage parents, ways to engage kids. Hopkins had some, they were crazy week, like a first-week spirit week this week to try to kick off the school year to a positive start. So just a big, a huge thank you to our faculty and our staff. Just incredible what they're pulling off, and to our families for working with us. Because not everything has gone off perfectly. We know that. It's far cry from that. We've had our glitches and we've had our moments and families have been patient and they've been kind and they presume positive intentions. So it's been great. It's been delightful to see children in buildings. I didn't realize how much I missed them and I missed it. And the adults in the buildings are saying that to a person, just what joy it is to have children in school. It's delightful. So we hope, and we should see in our data, God willing, things keep just bugging along. And we hope to keep moving forward. So it's been good.
Thanks, Annie. And so those numbers reflect where we are now, in-person enrollment for six weeks. And one of the things that I know, you know, we've talked about a little bit, and maybe you could just speak to here in terms of, those numbers may be impacted by folks either choosing to come into in-person during, during that time or folks who, kids who are or folks who, kids who are, become part of one of those groups that is able to meet face-to-face during that six weeks. Can, can you just speak a little bit to that for?
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. I'm so glad you reminded me of that. So that's really important for parents to understand because one could become eligible, right? Things can change and for, all kinds of things can change, right? Income eligibility, all kinds of things can change. Needs of a student, right? So these things are not, it's not, you had to have been eligible, your student had to have been eligible by this date and that was the only entry point. If you are, and if a family has any question about whether or not their child is eligible for in-person learning, please email or call your principal. So if you have any question, don't hesitate to ask, email or call your principal. And there is no question that is silly, so, because eligibility can change. So please reach out to us.
Thanks, Annie. So yeah, while we voted on the populations that are part of those eligible groups, the, the fact as to whether a child or family are eligible is something that can change given circumstances and otherwise throughout the school year.
Right. It's not like a pre-existing condition. It's something that we should constantly be looking at. And so stay in touch with your principals and your superintendent. Yes.
So Annie, these, the 123, those are the enrolled. So those are the children that have shown up this week.
Yes. Yeah. And there's been some adjustment over the last four days too. I know a student just joined us today at one of the schools, which was great to see them. As a matter of fact, I might have forwarded something to you all. So we had a student just show, just, they initially thought it was an eligible population, thought they were going to do remote. And then it wasn't, it wasn't working for the family. And so that student joined us today. It was wonderful to see the person. And, and we shouldn't necessarily call it enrolled, right? Because I have three kids who are catching in remotely. They're all, so our. Attending in person. Quite substantially larger. But I do want to add that, you know, four days into this. With three children catching in remotely, I've been really impressed and heartened and just amazed at our teachers and our educators and how much effort they put into being organized and being on top of where their students are. And I have a very self-directed child and two, you know, one not very self-directed child. And it's just amazing how our educators are so kind, gracious and find a way to engage the learners. So I've been thrilled with what I've seen.
Thanks, Humira. Here, here. Echoed that for the, for everyone that has helped to make that happen. All right. Are we good to move to Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant Notification?
Yes, and I can actually speak to both of the grant notifications. The enclosure was just the letter. So I want to announce that, yes, we did receive roughly $36,000 to assist us with some additional technology purchases. We are grateful that that was awarded from the state. We also received our implementation funding for implementation of innovation pathways. And I anticipate, I've submitted a request, a proposal for implementation funding for our early college implementation. So I anticipate that when it's, when it's formal, I will announce that to the school committee. I want to say, I should know right off the top of my head and I'll have better figures for you next time, but I do feel as though for competitive grants, I think 10 weeks in, we might be close to $178,000. So we're doing well. That's competitive. That's not entitlement. Entitlement's probably another, I don't know. I'll get it for you next, on October 1st. I'll have a grant update for you.
So Annie, just thinking about the Remote Learning Technology Grant, what are some of the things that come to mind in terms of areas where that may, may help to support or enhance our, our technology plans?
So they're pretty specific. We said, this is what we'd like. And they said, okay, you can use. I mean, I'll be honest, I asked for a lot more money than that, but I'm grateful to the state for anything that we get. I asked for a whole bunch more. So we'll use this funding to pay for the, what are these called? Chromebook convertibles for our second graders. I think we're doing Chromebook convertibles. So it's a tablet and a Chromebook, both or combined, for some hotspots, mobile hotspots. I think there are three mobile hotspots perhaps, Chromebook convertibles and maybe we'll have money left over for iPads as well. Again, I asked for many things, but I think with the $36,000, our Chromebook convertibles, additional iPads and mobile hotspots.
That's great. Any questions or comments on the grants?
Just great work by you and your team, Annie. Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Lot of help from the faculty and staff on this innovation pathway and early college network. So grateful for it.
Yeah, congratulations. All right. Review of public health data.
All right.
This is our first review, given the metric that we talked about last time and voted on. And we've gotten them pulled into a nice dashboard.
We hope. Let's make sure that. Well, where's my groovy chart? Oh, there it is. I was going to say, goodness gracious. All right. So what do we have here? The school committee and Tara or anybody, jump in if I'm not, if I don't, if I misspeak here. But we talked about in terms of the things that the school committee would be looking at. The school committee is looking at two things primarily. Evidence of community transmission and evidence of school transmission. We have no evidence of school transmission at this point. We don't have cases in the schools. In order to evaluate community transmission, the school committee had decided that they would look at average daily incidence rates in Hampshire County because we wanted a large enough population sample and testing positivity rate. And on the average daily incidence rate, we were using Harvard Global Health had put together a kind of a way of evaluating average daily incident rates. And that if they were less than one per 100,000, really there's everything, there's really nothing happening. Everything's great. If you had cases between, between one up to nine per 100,000, that at that point you should be, have mitigation strategies in place. But it doesn't mean that we have to, we have to shut things down. It just means that we should be, that transmission could occur and that we need to be implementing our mitigation strategies with consistency. And fidelity, I should say. When you start seeing orange and red, so 10 to 24 cases per 100,000 or greater than 25. Of course, if we were over here, more than 25 per 100,000, I imagine we'll be hearing from the state at that point. It probably would look a lot like last spring. But if we are 10 to 24, then there's certainly evidence of community transmission. And so where are we? These data are taken directly from the DPH dashboard that we looked at the last couple of meetings together. That dashboard is on like page three of the district plan, the link to it. So you can always get to it very easily. Families can look at this on their own. It's published every Wednesday by 6:00 PM. It's on the Department of Public Health's website. You Google in COVID-19 dashboard, mass DPH, it's going to bring you right to it. You click on the weekly dashboard. The blue up here, that's Hadley data. And we said Hadley's population is large enough for us to look at average daily incidents or testing positivity. However, we said we wanted to pay attention to what is happening in our local community. So these are all of the dates for which we have data, right? Since school has started, they have data from before that. And total case count, case count in the last 14 days. You can see the most recent one. There were zero in the last 14 days in Hadley. That's quite promising. Now the lavender columns up here, these are Hampshire County data, right? So average daily incidence rate per 100,000, they were at 2.8, 3.3, 2.3. In this past report, they were down to 101. So that's fantastic. That's that green area on Harvard Global Health. That is great news for Hampshire County. The testing positivity rate, you can see has remained, has decreased since last week and it's remained under 1%. We want that no greater than 3%. In the graph, it shows the trends of those data, both for testing positivity and average daily incidence rate.
Thanks, Annie. So I think, you know, given this, as of today, you know, we are still then on track for our six-week, you know, plan that we talked about in terms of then moving to the next phase as of today.
Yeah.
Annie, can I?
Yeah, of course.
I just, because I was looking at this data earlier, that testing positivity rate, I'm just like picking nits here. I apologize. On September 2nd, you have the test positivity rate of 0.85%. It's actually 0.38%.
Oh, thank you.
0.85 is, is the county right below us, so.
Thank you. Well, there you have it.
Thanks, Ethan.
The good thing that people can get this data themselves. That's helpful. This is why we want people.
The other thing I was going to mention, not that this is, just because it came up in a prior discussion around colleges and testing and what, you know, transparency we would have. It was announced yesterday that each Wednesday, that COVID-19 weekly public health report that's published each Wednesday will include a report on the number of tests performed, positive cases, percent positivity and the percent of new cases identified through testing by public and private colleges and universities. As well as, you know, as additional colleges launch their efforts, they're going to add those to the report. So just more information for folks in case they are looking at this data and are, you know, concerned about the impact of, or what colleges are doing. We did, you know, talk about that at a prior meeting, so I wanted to mention that that transparency, that, that will be part of the Wednesday reports that the state releases.
The charts, I am terrible at building charts in Google Sheets. The charts came from Excel. So I'll make sure I correct the charts. That's why the charts aren't updating. The charts are in an Excel workbook. So I'll update that and then the charts will be updated. Thank you for catching that, Ethan. So this is great news and I just want to thank folks in the county and folks in the community. This doesn't happen without people doing, being vigilant about what they need to do, which is socially distanced, wear masks and, you know, wash your hands and do what they need to do. So this doesn't happen in a vacuum. It doesn't happen by accident. We have a lot of influence and control over our own safety, health and wellbeing. And so folks are doing what they need to do. Our students have been fantastic. Our staff have been fantastic. A big thank you to our students. I know it is not fun to sit around in a mask in school. They've been great. They've been great. I, you know, there were a lot of folks who speculated, oh, young people will never do this. But they do. They're smart and they know. And when you do, when you take those steps, this is what we see. And I'm grateful for that. So, and when we see this, schools get to open. And that is all I am holding my breath for, right? Entirely.
Annie, do you want that? Just to follow, I was, I was going to ask how it's going last few days. So it's good to hear that. Things are going well. I'm sure there's a lot of lessons to learn. So also, you know, we had committed that we weren't going to allow anybody in until we had the HVAC up and running and air purifier. So any updates on those things? I know those are done, but we've talked about them a while.
Yes. So purifiers, we have that. HVAC, we had a good report on HVAC after all the cleaning happened, disinfecting, the repairs of the system. We're going to keep investing in improving the system. So the system is functioning well, but the town has been incredibly generous with allowing us to access the CARES funding for the town. And so we can continue to even do more improvements around heating ventilation, heating and ventilation and air conditioning in the buildings. So that is going well. And there are, sorry, go ahead, Paul.
And that allowed us, the CARES Act money allowed us to purchase the air purifiers that are in.
Yeah. Thank you, town. Yeah. Thank you, town. Very, very grateful for the Select Board, Town Administrator and Public Safety in supporting that request. And we will, I'm saying things, I feel like things are going extremely well. And we also recognize, let me say again, the families are saying, well, geez, I had trouble logging on. Like we know that there are glitches. We want to improve that. We also know that our, almost 100% of our emphasis, which is probably why people had a lot of conversation around, I'm not hearing exactly what the instructional practices will look like. Our emphasis was on safety. We wanted to have the option for children to attend school in person who wanted to do that and reduce risk. We wanted to make that as safe as possible. So now we're learning what's working and what's not working in terms of the educational experience, like kids who are learning remote and person. And so before we move to the next phase, we're not going to recommend any major changes, like no changes to mitigation, no changes to how much time parents can expect as we move through phases for schools to be open. But what this, the schedule looks like for students during the day, what that experience looks like, the reopening team is meeting, I don't know, next week or the week after. We're going to really make sure we start getting feedback from students, from the faculty about are there things we could do differently to make this a more engaging and enjoyable experience. So we really were focused on getting safe and staying safe and we're going to keep that as a priority and continually try to enhance things, make things better for kids and teachers.
So we'll keep coming back to this dashboard, build on this. And appreciate you putting it in, you know, the one, one visual that's clear to, clear to see.
Can I ask just before we move on? And Annie, you may already be doing this. And thank you for putting together the, the Excel with the table and the charts. That's helpful. And I'm just, I know that there was an email about communicating some of this stuff. Can we include that in the newsletter? Like includes, include our metrics, how, what we've decided on in the newsletter? Include the update on the HVACs and the safety and everything in our newsletter just for parents who aren't able to attend or read meeting minutes or whatnot? And also maybe just have the link for the DPH website right in there too. So that way they can just, because I know it can be hard to navigate that site, just to have handy.
Yes. I am putting a to-do note in my calendar for tomorrow. I'm not sharing my screen right now. Am I? Well, if I am, you all can see my calendar.
No, you're not.
Not that it's that exciting, but.
I think Paul just had to drop and he is dialed in.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make sure he's able to unmute as he needs to.
Okay, yes.
Someone may need to, as the host, be sure that the, the number ending in 4598 is able to unmute as they can. So Paul can talk to us. All right. Anything else on the review of the public health data?
No, not from my end.
All right. The flu vaccine requirements.
Just a reminder for families. So this is now regulation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for all students, just like there are vaccine recommendations. Again, what Mass Department of Public Health recommends for all families every year, that is a hyperlink within the reopening plan. So if people are wondering, where is that? You can always contact your school nurse if you are unsure. I also believe you can find it under Health Services on our district website and you can find it in the reopening plan. The flu vaccine requirement is a new requirement this year. So all students enrolled. And the department has said even students who are enrolled for remote learning, that that is a required vaccine. And it is not, we, we do not, the regulation does not say that we can mandate staff or faculty to do that. However, I will say that we have flu clinics for our staff. clinics for our staff next week at both schools, and we always have a very high turnout. Some of our faculty and staff choose to go to their own provider or they go elsewhere, but we do have very high turnout for our flu vaccination clinics that we provide onsite. My family just needs to know, this is not a school committee requirement. It is not a unique Hadley district requirement. This is now a regulation, a state regulation, just like all other vaccines are mandated by the Department of Public Health. Individual school committees do not determine which vaccines are required for school entry.
Annie, just because I didn't see it, did they set a deadline for when?
Yes, the end of the year. I want to say July. Okay.
January.
December 31st. Yeah, so by January 1, the end of the calendar year.
And I, I understood, too, that that applied for all enrolled students, whether they were in person or remote.
That's correct. That is correct. Yep.
Okay.
And that's the flu vaccine. I just want to be clear about that. There's been a lot of the news about COVID-19 vaccine. This is the flu vaccine that we're talking about.
Thanks, Annie. Okay, and Paul is back with us by phone, and I believe you are unmuted. Paul, are you able to say hello?
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Great. Okay, thank you. All right, our last presentation discussion item is the COVID-19 resolution, which was introduced at our last meeting. Humira brought this to our attention, and it is something that came from a neighboring district within the state and that others within other districts have chosen to adopt it in some fashion. So we had asked last meeting that it go through just an initial review to make it more appropriate for our district and our terminology, and so that has come back to us today for review. Humira, would you like to open up the conversation?
Sorry about that. I was on mute. Yes, again, this is, the, the basic idea behind this resolution is that we know when there is mass and inexpensive testing available to all our students and families, you know, a dollar to $3 tests that students can do every day, every other day, that, you know, schools with a grant could acquire or that community members could easily attain, that we could really be a lot, a lot more in control of when, you know, a virus might be introduced in, into the community and, and really just be out ahead of any kinds of cases or spikes. So it just makes a lot of sense to support an initiative that would allow for widespread availability for low-cost testing. Right now, the regulations don't necessarily allow that. This kind of test exists already. It's, it exists around the globe. It exists in our nation, but they're not necessarily widely available. And if we band together with other school districts and advocate for them to be widely available, then we could, this could really come in handy over the coming year, year and a half, in order to just ensure that we open and stay open. So I enthusiastically endorse the voting for this resolution and supporting our colleagues around the state who are leading the charge in advocating for this.
Yeah, I would agree. I think when you brought it to our attention at the last meeting, that it seems like it would not only be, you know, an important show of support in terms of our district's needs and rights, but also a show of support for our state's districts. Is there any portion of this, Humira, that you'd like to read aloud? We see it on the screen here, but I think.
I don't, I don't think it's especially necessary to, to, to do so. I, it's not especially inspiring per se. I mean, if there is a, a passage that strikes anyone as especially interesting, I, I highly urge us to, to do that. But I, I just think the basic idea is inexpensive tests, widely accessible, available for our community to deploy, for teams going to games, for, you know, students coming in, you know, if at such time that we're not in a cohort model, you know, all of those things are potentially in our future and more easily accessible if we are able to have tests like these.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just read real quick that, what the resolution is at the bottom there, if you just scroll down. Basically, what we're requesting is that as part of this resolution, we request that the Commonwealth allocate funding for regular proactive testing for teachers, staff, and students in our schools, that we request the Commonwealth support schools, school districts to identify and procure appropriate testing strategies and supplies, which may include low-cost, low-sensitivity tests to be used at high frequencies, and mandate that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and local public health departments provide real-time data for decision-making, including daily updates on the number and rates of new COVID-19 cases, percent positive tests for COVID, and exposed contacts in their districts. Well, I think, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of it. Is there any dialogue, further dialogue we need to have around?
I don't have any questions. Go ahead, Paul.
There's this one, just one tweak. I think on the third, whereas, the first COVID is a little wrong, just a little minor nitpick. It says the COVID is a highly transmissible virus. COVID is the disease. SARS is the virus. Just some, we'd have to treat that. It's caused by a highly transmissible virus. Other than that, I fully supported it. It's a great idea.
Got it. With that, with that accuracy change in the whereas COVID is, I think it's that third paragraph, whereas?
Yeah, right.
I see it right here. Yeah. COVID-19 is a highly transmissible disease. I will change that instead of highly transmissible virus. Yep.
Or it's caused by a highly transmissible virus. Yeah. I love this idea. So I think it's great. Yep.
Okay. Great. With that change, is there a motion to approve the COVID-19 resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed or abstained? All right. Great. Thank you. And thanks, Humira, for bringing this to our attention. All right. We're gonna move now into some of our regular housekeeping business. So Personnel Report. Annie?
Yes. So we have, and we want to thank folks for their service. We've had some folks who have decided that they needed to retire this year. Stephen Saluzio, a biology teacher at Hopkins Academy. We have hired Nicholas Dowd, no relation to our elementary principal, just happened to share the same last name, as an, as our new biology teacher at Hopkins. And Pamela Bobadere, a teacher at Hadley Elementary School, also has retired this year. That class is being taught by Koki Mulligetta, and so we're very happy that Koki is one of our, on our fifth, sixth grade team now. We have had some resignations from educational support professionals. We're very happy for them. In some cases, they have secured positions. In one case, ESP secured it. Some are going to graduate school. You'll have another updated report. We had a recent notification of someone who secured a position teaching at a private school, so we're thrilled for them and that they are advancing their professional goals. And you'll have an additional update next, well, we meet on October 1st, because we have a few other things that we've been notified informally of a couple of other changes, and when those are finalized informal, we'll get more additional information on October 1st.
All right. Great. Thank you. Chris, I believe it's your turn for the Business Manager Reports.
Hey, sorry. I just had to turn everything on here.
Hey, there.
So, long time no see, by the way. I haven't seen you guys in a while.
I know. You've missed all the fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had plenty of my own, so yeah, I, I don't feel left out. Trust me.
I know you don't.
So we have the, really the First Expense Report. We've closed out FY '20, and we are now fully on FY '21. So you, you have the First Expense Report here. You know, as with most First Expense Reports, it's really not all that exciting. And somewhat, I hate to use the word incorrect, but there's, there's expenses charged to the local budget, which will be moved over to some of these COVID-related grants that we've received. So as we got the bills in, we had to pay them, so we paid them from the local budget. And then as we set up the accounts with the town, we will transfer these over to those grant accounts. So the expenses you see, which are by no means, you know, what I would consider higher than normal for this point in time, will actually be decreased as I transfer them over into the grant accounts. So it'll actually look a little better than what you see right now. So I mean, I don't know if anything jumped out at, at anyone there. You know, there are some lines that are slightly above what we've budgeted when you figure in the encumbrances as well. Again, many of those will go down as we transfer the expenses out. So I mean, at this point, if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer anything you might have.
None for me.
Okay. I see, I see a whole lot of head shaking, so just move on to the, the revolving accounts. The grant report, at this point in time, we've had no expenses to the grants, and because it's so early in the year, a couple of the grant applications just opened up this month, so we haven't even received them all. Probably next month, I should be able to get them, at least on the report, but we'll have the amount that we've been awarded. And I know earlier in the meeting, Ann had mentioned kind of coming up with the total for all the grants that we've received, and obviously, when I get that report to you, that will have that total. So you'll be able to see it. It's a nice-looking total, I have to say. So.
Great.
And if we go to the revolving accounts report, you can see that.
Look at that.
Yeah, the lunches is looking stronger than it has recently. What we've done is we've actually built some lunch expenses into the budget, knowing that every year we have to transfer expenses to our local budget to bring the lunch account back into the positive. And so as a result of that, and also with the extension of the free lunch program until the end of the year, that's actually a big help for the lunch program, because what happens now is that we get reimbursed for the free lunch amount, which is about $4 per lunch, and we're getting about $3 per lunch, you know, when people pay for it. So we're actually making an extra dollar per meal. And what that shows is, as I've seen the revenues coming in, it's a much nicer revenue. You wouldn't think a dollar would make a difference, but actually, a dollar over $3, it's a 33% increase. So we're looking at, you know, a really nice-looking increase there. And there were similar items with the preschool revolving as well, where the 391 grant is now over. So, you know, we, we used to get about $30,000 a year from, from that grant to fund some of the teacher salaries in the preschool. That is no longer in effect. So more expenses will be charged from the preschool program to the regular budget. And that has been, you know, reflected in this year's budget. So, you know, again, not much of a concern in that particular account. And then, you know, student activity, I mean, that, that's, it's, it's pretty much probably an average balance that you, that you see in that account. In fact, if I look at last year's, yeah, it's, it went anywhere last year from $88,000 to $120,000. So it's, it's pretty much right, right about in the middle there. Hadley Kids, so this account is just the revolving account for Hadley Kids. It does not include the $100,000 gift that would be coming from that, from that program as well. We have not gotten that yet. So that's just the revolving account. And the school choice balance is higher than typical. As some expenses come in, we've charged expenses from school choice for certain technology-related items that are, again, COVID-related, and, you know, any of those that we can't squeeze into one of the grants that we've gotten, because, you know, we can't just put anything to those grants. We have to put what we've allocated for them, and they have to be COVID-related. So, but we've also spent more money and, and charged the school choice. So as the bills come in, that will go down. And we've also budgeted to spend $854,000 this year from the school choice account. So, you know, it looks healthy. It won't be quite that high at the end of the year, but, you know, right now, it's, it's looking good.
Thanks, Chris. I did want to mention one thing about lunch that Annie, you and I talked about. When the announcement came out that the free lunch program would be extended through the end of this year, we wanted to be sure that families who are eligible, though, for free and reduced lunch services, that they still apply for those services, if they are, if they qualify and they are eligible, to still fill out that application. Because even though it is free through the end of the year, there are broader implications in terms of being able to be part of that free and reduced lunch program. Annie, is there anything else you want to say about that?
No, you said it perfectly. We can also assist if families are eligible for free and reduced lunch, if there are other programs for which they're eligible. Our, our food service department and other employees in the district are keen to work with families to make sure that we can get them connected to everything for which they are eligible. So please, if you have any question, reach out, and we'll help you with the form and any paperwork you need to do.
Thanks. All right, Chris, anything else?
I, I really have nothing else. No, not at this time. No questions on revolving from anyone?
I'll just say it. Yes, when Chris does the revolving report, no, you've never seen a lunch account look like that when I presented the revolving account. So I'll just say it.
There will be red on there, I'm sure, when Chris.
I'm sure if Chris is absent and I'm reporting it, so it will not look like that.
I'm, I'm pretty confident of that as well, yes. And I did warn Ann the other day that I was going to gloat about the balance, but then I kind of dialed it back a little bit, so.
Yeah, Chris, you did mention the amount that we had earmarked in our budget from school choice funds. And, you know, I wonder whether that might be a good number to just maybe even include at the, in the top, not as, more as a reference, just that it is, they are funds that are, you know, we have earmarked them. They are spoken for. And we may have to add to that, because we have often had to come back to the committee and ask for additional funds to be, or, you know, bills or things to be paid out of school choice. So it might be a good reminder, if you don't mind adding that to the revolving account report.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Actually, I can just add a row at the top and, and, you know, for every one of those accounts, if there actually is something, you know, in any of the others that have been spoken for, I can just put that in there, you know. Let me just take a quick look. Okay, yeah, so the athletic revolving, we actually moved out already, the, the $17,000 that was for the athletic fields. But that would have been another, you know, item that I could have put at the top, just to say, you see this balance, but let's not get too excited about it, because some of it's already spoken for. The other thing is that it's, it's actually good to have a balance like this, because there's so many question marks with the revenues that we'll be getting this year from that program. You know, if homeschool numbers are considerably higher than they were last year, for example, that's less school choice revenue we're going to see, or, or could, could be less school choice revenue if, if some of those students were choice in. So, you know, having, having that balance, even with a good portion of it spoken for, is certainly going to come in handy at the end of the year.
Great.
Hey, this is Paul. Heather, I think that's a great idea. That, Chris, you kind of touched on a question I had. Annie, do we have a sense of what school choice numbers look like? Annie, do we have a sense of what school choice numbers look like this year?
All I can do at this point is use the standard method that I do, which is take out the seniors. I can tell you that we have had an uptick in homeschool applications. Some of those are school choice, so that will hit school choice revenues for this year. And some of those are Hadley residents, which will hit Chapter 70 funding for next year, which is the town funding. So we've, we have not, we, I haven't seen anything, any significant movement in school choice. It's more the, the bubble has been around homeschool applications, which is unusual in our district. It's, that's the uncommon one. We don't typically see that.
Okay. Question about the lunch grant. Can you, Annie, explain the rationale for why we got that? I'm not complaining. That's a pretty wonderful thing. But I was pretty surprised to see that. Can you mention how, why that became available to us?
Funds for lunch to expand the free and reduced lunch.
Every...
To everybody. Yeah. So that was not just, that was federal regulation USDA. They decided to expand the program nationwide, I believe. This is, the federal government extended this nationwide. I see other people nodding their head, too. I think I'm correct on that. So this, I think this was more of a congressional act, right? That authorized USDA then to expand that program, which is a wonderful, that's fantastic. Yeah, so it wasn't unique to Hadley in this point. Wasn't unique to Hadley. It was a, it was a good move by the federal government to make sure that families have access to food. There are many families that rely on us for two out of three meals a day.
It's a wonderful thing. I now understand that it's, it sounds like it's part of a larger stimulus-like strategy to help.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. All right, then let's move into our school committee reports and discussion. Any updates from the policy committee?
I'm going to take this one because it's so, I have been the one to say the policy subcommittee would be happy and thrilled to be working at full speed on this. And I have been the one that has said, can I do one thing at a time? So we will re-get policy subcommittee up and running. And the law in action has been me. Although I haven't had a law in action, but the law of policy action has been because of me.
I don't think anybody's clamoring, but I forwarded some things to the group that came from MASC regarding policies that may be impacted by COVID. So, you know, that may be your first plan of attack in terms of things that are more time-sensitive. But otherwise, I think you guys have always been diligent in marching through the district policies and tackling each section. All right, finance and tri-board, any update there? None.
So I would say, as it pertains to the school committee, there was, there were two things that I, that I pulled up. One was, there were some conversations around the green laws that are going to be put into place and the impact that may have on future Hopkins Academy renovations. And then the only other thing was, there was some conversation around, and Annie, I know I asked you this earlier about Article 6, there was some money that's going to be coming back to the school system at some point. But I don't recall how much it was or why it was coming back.
Yeah, so I can now remember why. Again, I own this one where he diligently said, now let's review what happened at that meeting. And I was like, gosh, I don't remember. That seems a lifetime ago. But it was a grant that was misclassified last year. So the accounting side of the house and the town side had classified a grant that belonged to the schools in the wrong category. And so they'll make the adjustment. And I don't remember exactly. I feel like it was just under $30,000.
I was going to say, I think it was around $30,000, yeah.
And, yeah, so we'll, we'll see that correction. And, yes, and then the bit about green initiatives. And I'm not sure when the next finance subcommittee meeting is, but as soon as I get that information, I'll pass it along.
Great. Thank you. Next are fields and the CPA update. I'm not sure whether, Paul, if you're still connected with us? If not, Chris, if you're still on, if you are able to speak to it?
Sure, I can, yeah. So it's actually going quite well. There have been bumps in the road. I'm not going to, I'll return on the video, too. I won't lie about that because, oh my God. I mean, they were digging in the middle of the field, and then, oh, there were stumps buried there. So we had to have a change order to dig out all of these stumps and have them hauled away somewhere. I mean, it was just, in the beginning, it was one thing after another, where I'm like, oh, this is not, this is not going well. But once we got those out of the way, and fortunately, we had the funds to cover all of that, they actually told me the other day that things are really moving along quite nicely. The weather has cooperated where, you know, we haven't had heavy rainfall because that really could have put a, no pun intended, but a damper on things because you really can't work in that kind of soil when it's mud. You know, it would just, it would just be a disaster. So the fact that it's been relatively dry has been a help for that project. There were some requests from the neighbors to spray down the soil at a certain point in time because it had gotten so dry that as machines drove over it, it created dust that, just the way the wind blows there, it just constantly blew toward people's houses. And so, and I actually did go outside just to, you know, to see what it looked like myself. And it was really surprising that they didn't even have to be pushing the dirt. And actually, there didn't even have to be a machine on the dirt. But just when the wind blew, all of a sudden, these clouds of dust would fly up in the air. And although you would think that they would dissipate into the air by the time they went the probably 400, 500 feet to the house, they didn't. I mean, it was just, it was really surprising. So the contractor had no problem just bringing in water and spraying it down. And as far as I can tell, the irrigation is being installed this week. The well that we had existing had to be replaced because the equipment was just not capable of producing the gallons per minute that was required by the irrigation system. That has been installed, and it's, it's all set as well. So, you know, we avoided having any kind of delays from that. And it's looking good.
Great, yeah. And Paul earlier mentioned how the walking path looked and how excellent that is. So, good. All right. Collaborative, Humira?
Yes, so the collaborative had a board meeting on August 12th, and I wasn't able to attend. I think it's possible that we may have had a school committee meeting that night or around that night, maybe before and after that night. It was around the time we were meeting every day.
Probably.
But I just emailed you their last board meeting minutes, along with some highlights, which include the fact that they were also struggling with reopening plans for the schools that they operate. They also received careless funding. They also applied for a Payroll Protection Plan Act that's forgivable for all the staff that they have, and they're searching for an executive director. So, you know, we think we have it bad, but we're not searching for an executive director. Annie, you're staying.
Thank God. All right. Well, thank you for passing that information along.
No problem. It's in your inbox, by the way.
Great. All right, I think we're on then just to our last two action items, the approval of the warrants. Is there a motion for approval of the accounts payable warrant submitted in August 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And I will actually abstain. And then approval of the warrants submitted in August 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain from that vote as well. All right. That concludes all of our items. Just a reminder that we're not going anywhere. We've got lots of meetings. We have four meetings on the books here. October 1st, 5:30, October 15th at 5:30, November 5th, 5:30, and November 19th at 5:30. And we will start right at 5:30. We look forward to seeing everybody there. And thank you to the public and select board and other representatives who came out tonight. We really appreciate it.
And just, yeah, go ahead. Before, before motioning to move, just a deep appreciation for the times that we receive a calendar invite that allows us to book that time on our calendar. I just quickly scanned for the calendar to see if that time was blocked, and it isn't, which means it's fair game. It could be taken by anyone. So I, we welcome those calendar invites with the...
I'll make sure I do that tomorrow morning. I'll set up all the Zoom meetings and do that, hopefully.
Thanks.
No problem. Okay.
To adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.